Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. It was properly posted on June 12th and our prayer and pledge will be led by District 3 Chief Deputy Randy Graff.
Good morning Commissioners, thank you. Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we praise you and thank you for this day. We thank you for everything that you have created. And we thank you so much for the opportunity that we have to be here and serve the citizens of Oklahoma County. And we just pray that we will do that with wisdom and with humility. Lord, we're thankful for the safe return to us of Commissioner Mon. We pray for all of those who are recovering from the accident. And we just pray that you will be with them during this time of recovery as well. Lord, we are thankful for Commissioner Vaughn as well. He celebrates his birthday today and we celebrate what he has meant to us and to all of those who have known him. And we celebrate Commissioner Johnson because we all love her anyways. Lord, we thank you for the celebration of Flag Day and for what it represents, this wonderful nation. The freedoms that we have to elect those who will lead us, who will serve us. The freedom we have to stand here to praise your name, to invoke your blessings upon the people of this great city, county, state, and nation. Lord, we pray that you will be with all of those who are defending this nation and raking that flag high all over the world. And for all of the values that they represent, like we talked about, freedom, liberty, justice. Lord, we thank you most of all for your justice, for your mercy, for your grace, and for your son Jesus who died for us. And it's in his name that we pray. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Randy. Thank you for the mention in the prayer. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 5th?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five through sixteen are the consent document items.
Move the consent document to the individual who is aware of the standard.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our awards. Jane?
Morning. Good to see you up in the bathroom.
Thank you.
We have three awards today. The first one is bid number 11706089 for Oklahoma County Jail cell LED lighting. Invitations to bid were sent and five bids were received. And based upon evaluation of the bids and input from the Sheriff's Department, I'm recommending awards to the low bid provided by Hunzucker Brothers Incorporated. The next item is CW18076 for solid waste disposal. Invitations to bid were sent and four bids were received. And based upon evaluation of those bids and feedback from the end users, I'm recommending award to the low bid per line item to Republic Services, WCA of Oklahoma, and Waste Connection of Oklahoma. And the final is CW18025-1 Highway Materials and Supplies. Invitations to bid were sent and fifteen bids were received. And based upon evaluation of those bids and feedback from the end users, I'm recommending award to the lowest bid per single line item to Brown Transportation, A&amp;A Trucking Incorporated, Bernie Mathis Trucking, General Materials Incorporated, Martin Marietta, the Leacy Brothers, Silver Star Construction, Heska Lemon Construction, Vance Brothers, Ergon Asphalt and Emulsion, T&amp;C Asphalt Materials, Logan County Asphalt, Atlas Hating Company, Debrah's Incorporated, and Kenner Metals.
Move it.
Second.
Move it.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
District 1 has a few items there.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna lean on safety pretty good for most of these items that we are involved in.
Okay. Commissioners, item eighteen is another rail crossing upgrade on a section line in the city of Jones. We pay about ten percent of the cost of this and the state and the railroad pick up the rest. Good safety improvement for the county. Recommend approval.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And item nineteen is a relocation of a tenant in the Crecheo project. Would recommend approval of that.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. We are steadily moving in the Crecheo area to get that whole place unpopulated. Although there will be, my fear is there are gonna be some people who won't leave. But for those who are leaving, I'm glad we're gonna help them. So move this item.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then item twenty, we were able to add a house to the program that wasn't on the original list. So we'll need to be demolishing that. So we're change order contract for the demolition contractor.
Move the aye.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Stacy, let me just ask you this question. I just, never mind me. What is the amount percentage wise that we as a county can approve?
On contracts below a million, it's fifteen percent.
Fifteen, okay. I was thinking it was ten.
That's over a million. It's ten.
Okay. All right, thank you. Move the aye.
Item twenty-one is another one of the railroad projects. It's also on a section line in Jones. And we're paying about ten percent of the cost of that.
Okay. Move the aye.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And twenty-two on, I think are some of your specific assistance agreements with the various school districts and cities. I didn't really have much to do with those Commissioner.
Right. We've got Esquire here. I wouldn't dare not let him be chief deputy.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Welcome back Commissioner Mon.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two is a specific assistance agreement between Oklahoma County and Luther Public Schools. Luther Public Schools has approached us needing some help with some erosion issues near their football field. So that's what item twenty-two is. District 1 will be providing labor and equipment. The school district will reimburse one hundred percent of material costs. This will be paid for out of the District 1 general fund. We will replace anything that comes out of highway cash with general fund dollars. Item twenty-three is also a specific assistance agreement with Luther Public Schools. This one is to remove approximately seventy trees on their property that are consistently falling and creating a safety hazard on their property. So they've approached us to remove those. There is no material cost on the school. It is all, it is an entire labor and equipment process. So we would like to assist them with that project. And then item twenty-four is also with Luther Public Schools. If you require, if you recall the wildfires that went through Luther here a while back. It burnt a lot of that area. Several houses were damaged. The school has actually purchased that property and they would like us to help them remove, clear and remove the housing pads that are in that area for a future parking lot site to help assist the school. So those are items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Move, we approve big three. Noting that I am in tears that we're gonna still wait with those trees. It seems that if they could find a way to plant them somewhere around their parking lot, to me. But I'm just a girl. What do I know? I hate to lose a tree. Thank you and I approve those three items.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you Cody.
You're welcome.
District 2, this is a mutual aid agreement with Oklahoma County and Oklahoma City Community College. It's just a renewal of our mutual cooperative agreement. I'll move the item.
This is OSU extension. It's a modification of the OSU extension contract that expires in two weeks.
That's perfect.
Oklahoma City Community College.
Well, run item twenty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were through with District 1. I apologize. Go ahead Cody.
Yes sir. What twenty-five is contemplating is the contract that this board had previously approved. It would just be amending the language in paragraph sixteen to match the language that the Policy and Governance Committee has recommended for the upcoming fiscal year. In essence, what it does is it takes out the language about negotiations that they're extended into the succeeding fiscal year. That there would be an operation on temporary appropriations until the final agreement. And then at that point, it would be retroacted back to the beginning of the fiscal year. This is an effort to make sure that there's no ambiguity between what's temporary assistance, what's not temporary assistance, and kind of clears up some potential muddy issues.
Move the aye.
May I question?
So what's contemplated is that now that we're gonna have contracts with OSU and now that the sixteen-seventeen contract has been executed and supposedly the seventeen-eighteen contract will be executed, we no longer need this language. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yeah. As long as both parties, you know, I think what's contemplated is both parties coming to an agreement before the beginning of the fiscal year. That way there's no, well, is how much money do we need to have, you know, available and all of that? That way, since we're on a contract basis, it's gonna be much easier going forward and there won't be the muddy waters.
Makes sense, since we're switching to a contract, not a, not a agency type arrangement.
Yes sir.
So, I understand. Thank you.
I'll second.
OSU happy? Okay. Yeah? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, you're ACOG.
Yes. We are entering into a relationship where we're gonna get about fifty-four thousand dollars from the REAP grant. Is that true?
Yes. Eric Grant worked diligently to help you get this grant, so I'm letting him.
Oh yeah. Eric is good. He works nice.
Yeah. This is just REAP grant that we've been applying for, for the last few years through ACOG. And basically what we're doing here is replacing a wooden structure that is very narrow on Diagonal Road and replacing with a, basically a wider structure that's gonna be concrete from what I understand. Brian Jasper is the one who helped me put the application together. And so it has been approved and this is just approving the contract to move forward. And they will send us a notice to proceed as far as construction. Once we have that, then we can begin. This project is good. There's actually a wedding event center that's recently been placed out there on Diagonal Road. And so this will help people coming and going to that particular event center.
Thank you. Move it.
All in favor, things that are going to help people get married.
Is that a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, I'm black on track. Okay, that's the O triple C agreement and I'll move the item.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The assessor has items twenty-eight. This is just the... Pardon?
I was guessing they're not that much.
Oh, okay. I made a mistake again. Twenty-eight and twenty-nine, these are just routine agreements, aren't they? See Larry with the, oh, I'm sorry Larry. Is that right? Okay. RK Black Inc. and Simgan. Is that right?
Simgan, uh-huh.
Move the aye.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sunk down. I can't see as good. You have to wait.
If you could, and Larry, I didn't have a chance to talk to you beforehand, but on item twenty-nine, I was looking at the contract and the executed date is of course July 1st, but the expiration is June 30th, 2017. So I think that's just a typo. It needed to be 2018. So I didn't know if that was going to be an issue.
I expect that's one of those things that can be corrected by our...
Exactly by you guys here, but I just wanted to make sure that you were aware.
It's wrong on the contract, but right on the agenda item?
Yeah, yeah, but just the contract whenever that goes through.
Okay.
Move, we approve it with the change in the date of ending.
Yes. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you Cody for pointing that out. Okay, the county clerk has items thirty through thirty-two. David is here. Danny or Doug or John?
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Good to see you back.
Thank you.
I'll speak to thirty. Thirty is the Summit Financial Group. That's what the Budget Board approved last Budget Board meeting. That's a special one we had for the new prescription plan. So this is finalizing that contract, changes behind the scenes.
John, there's no encumbrance attached to this thing.
These expenses are paid through the health plan, so paid as claims. You know, we process our claims or billed by the claims administrator as expenses to the plan.
Okay, so is it subject to encumbrance?
No ma'am.
It's okay? Okay. Move it.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next agreement is with Healthcare Highways. That's our new provider network for the health plan effective seven-one. The Budget Board approved this in a special meeting. Again, there's no encumbrance because these expenses are paid and billed through the health plan.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about thirty-two?
Morning Commissioners and welcome back.
Thanks.
All right. Thirty-two is mainly, was placed there just to give you all the option of, in essence, rescinding your April 12th decision to form the new, the new group. And that would leave my staff intact to continue doing what they're, they are doing and have been doing, so.
Is there any discussion either of you?
I'm not hopeful for this, but I want to know what we're taking.
Okay.
No?
No action. Thank you for putting it on the agenda. Court Services, item thirty-three, the Stanley Systems copier lease renewal.
Move the aye.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thirty-four from Engineering, Stacy. You've got a few items there. Oh, IT's got the rest of them, sorry. Eric, back to the rescue. Basically, the stormwater plan, we had to update that plan that was put into place in 2005. The reason for the update is because the state had changed their general permit, which is OKRO4, which addresses stormwater pollution basically that's associated with construction and whatnot. So basically, we brought our plan into concert with their new permit that was approved back at the end of November of 2015. Basically, the purpose of the plan is to provide not only services as far as household hazardous waste recycling that we provide to citizens of Oklahoma County through Midwest City where people can bring their household hazardous to them for recycling, but it's also to provide information to citizens of the effect of non-point source pollution, such as oil, grass clipping, dirt that's associated with construction when it runs off site into creeks, which impairs creeks and other water bodies. We also, one of the new things that we've done with this plan is we're going to start doing monitoring. Chisholm Creek is one of the creeks that is currently impaired that is in the urbanized area, which is what this plan focuses on. We've gone out there one time to this point to do some monitoring. Everything falls in line, but we're gonna continue to monitor that creek which is impaired for nitrates. Some of the other things that we do is when it comes to subdivisions, we go to do stormwater inspections to make sure that all of the necessary BMPs, best management practices are in place, to make sure all of the sediment during construction stays on the site. Commissioner Vaughn is aware of that in his particular district now with the subdivision that is coming in front of the Planning Commission tomorrow actually for final approval. But those are kind of some of the highlights of the plan. Basically, it's just to bring our old plan into conformance with the new permit.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now Rob, can you take us through thirty-five through thirty-seven?
Good morning. All these items are renewals from last year, including the Cox Circuits, some consulting and training from Windtrack, and also some services that we received from InfoTech.
Move it.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you Rob. Thank you sir.
Jamie, you want to talk to this thirty-eight?
Morning.
Morning.
This is a contract renewal, it's a routine for site services, counseling, treatment programs for sex offenders.
I move, we approve this. I thank you very much for being involved in this kind of a program. Some of these kids can be helped, I'm sure, with early treatment.
That's the goal.
Hand or prevention, so I appreciate that very much. Move the aye.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then thirty-nine, our government's...
Move the aye.
I'll second.
You want to talk about this then?
Be happy to. The item is a contract, it's the renewal of the contract that we just dealt with, with OSU. For this year, it's the renewal of the contract for next year. And the amount set forth in that contract was four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for their annual appropriation from the county. That's about half of their budget. And I've...
How much, item fifty-two, four hundred and fifty?
Four, did I say something other than?
You said four fifty, Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry. Four hundred and fifty, that's, thank you. And I had filed an amendment last week to raise that figure to five hundred thousand based on the fact that Ms. Hines had not had an opportunity really to present her budget to BET and BET did not address the budget, but made just roughly an estimate of what they thought it should be. The prior year, this last year, was four hundred and eighty-seven thousand as I recall, or forty-eighty-nine thousand perhaps. And so the four fifty was a little short and she felt she was going to have to release one of her educators. And so I thought the, she'd requested five, I think five forty-something. And I visited with her about her budget. She thought that she could live with the five hundred thousand if that could be approved. And so I agreed to ask the two of you to approve that at five hundred thousand. So I renew my motion to amend that contract from four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand.
And the Budget Board has to come back with it today?
Right.
Is that right? There's a correlating item?
Yes sir. At ten-thirty, the Budget Board will be asked to add that amount of money to the budget for next year.
Coming from the reserve?
From the reserve account.
Okay.
So are we gonna move it without having, without...
Yeah, I think we can do so. That creates the request and sets the policy, I think. And then the Budget Board will need to address the issue at ten-thirty.
Okay. Move it. Second. Move it.
At the five hundred thousand figure.
Well...
How much were you wanting?
Well, I wanted to be consistent and we had not...
Well, okay, let me address that. We, like, last year, we funded them at four hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Yes.
This year, we have asked them to take on all the utilities that they pay out there.
Okay.
So there have been increases in their costs. And I'm not asking that we cover everything that they requested, but I felt that that was a reasonable number and so that Ms. Hines had five hundred.
You think it would have been just easier if we just pay the electric?
Well, probably. It would probably cost us more. So I think this is a savings, you know, to us.
Okay. Move it.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for working through that. I know that was complicated.
Thank you.
Item forty from planning to Mr. Will Jones, getting reappointed?
That's one of my appointees. Mr. Jones has been here a lot longer than I have, which for an unpaid physician, I applaud him. I think he will be entering his fourth, yeah, fourth term as a planning commissioner. He chairs our planning commission currently and of course lives out in the District 3 unincorporated area. He served since nineteen ninety-nine. And when I asked him if he wanted to be reappointed, he quickly replied that he would be happy to if that was my decision. So I'm happy to reappoint him. I've known him for a long time and he's an excellent member of the commission.
He was initially appointed by my old boss, Stuart Ernest.
Wow.
That goes back a ways.
Yeah. So I move his reappointment.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Treasurer has items forty-one through seventy-five.
Believe it or not, we'll go through these fast. Well, I'll join in welcoming back Mr. Chairman and that looks like that hurts.
It does. For the record.
And Commissioner Vaughn, happy birthday to you.
Oh, thank you sir.
And Commissioner Johnson, you're still my favorite.
Thank you.
Okay.
And my only consolation is that I've had fewer birthdays than you have.
They're regrettable. There are a lot of people in this room who have had fewer birthdays than I have. But you are correct. Mathematically, you are correct. Okay. Commissioners, item number forty-one is the annual financial statement by statute. We do prepare our status, numerical status as far as on our resale property fund, keeping in mind that that is fed virtually, not quite one hundred percent, but close to it, from interest that are paid on unpaid taxes. And each year then we go through and do a full analysis on it to ensure we think we have enough, that we have enough for our coming year budget and see if we have excess. And if we have excess, then by statute, the treasurer can send the excess out to the schools, to the cities, and part of it to our county general. And this year, I'm proud to say, proud, proud to say we got a lot of money in there. Sad to say about how that money still has to come in. I'd much rather have people pay their taxes timely and not have to pay us that interest. But having said all of that, so what we are proposing to do this year is to apportion four million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, declaring it excess and apportioning that amount out to again those three entities. That is far and away the largest amount that we have ever been able to apportion. And incidentally, that part of that apportionment, one-third of it, one million, four hundred and forty thousand dollars, will be going into county general and that will go into county general next week with the apportionment. The one-third of it then will go out to schools based upon the average daily attendance at the schools within Oklahoma County. And then finally, one-third will go to cities based upon their assessed valuations. So I would ask that your motion pleased to receive this report.
That's excellent.
Move the big three.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you bud.
Thank you Commissioners. Item number forty-two is our bank fee agreement with Bank of Oklahoma. There are no changes in the bank fees and again, we'd recommend that that contract be approved.
Move it.
Second.
Are all these basically the same?
We're going to get, that's what I want to get right now.
All right.
Okay, now I would ask that we do...
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now go ahead.
Okay. Forty-three through sixty-one has just been approved.
Thank you. No, no, no. We just did the other one.
We just did forty-two.
Now we're ready for you.
I'm sorry.
Ready for your grouping.
Okay. Now my grouping. I would like to group items number forty-three through sixty-one. This is authorizing the investments of funds in the various accounts that we have that require the separate resolutions. So again, that would be forty-three through sixty-one.
Move the aye.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number sixty-two is our annual contract for lockbox with Bank of Oklahoma. This is, geez gosh, I guess we're going on probably twenty-plus years now of having the lockbox. And we get a great fee on that and that cuts down on the workload tremendously. And I'm not sure that we could process the three hundred and twenty, thirty thousand accounts that we have without a lockbox operation. So this is a continuation of this contract item.
Move the aye.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item sixty-three is on authorization to do our overnight investments. This are called sweeps. Sweeps are something that's not all that old, but sweeps, what it does is it allows us to ensure that every penny of county money is invested twenty-four hours a day.
Move the aye.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item sixty-four is a request that you would authorize us to have four change funds. Two of them would have five hundred dollars and two of them would have two hundred and fifty dollars. And all four of these change boxes are cash box... And all four of these change boxes, or cash boxes, are maintained in our cage upstairs.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item sixty-five and sixty-six are, again, now we're back to authorizing the investment, in this case, of the county clerk's mechanical lean fund, and authorizing the investment of the general fund, not necessarily, not immediately necessary for expenditures, sixty-five and sixty-six.
Move with approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item sixty-seven, now that we're gonna do all the investment, we ask that you approve our investment policy and guidance.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item sixty-eight and sixty-nine, uh, we're asking for permission to, for the following financial institutions, all located within Oklahoma County,
to be used as depositories, official depositories for the coming fiscal year. That does not necessarily mean that we would have funds in those various entities, but for example, if there was to be a, um, CD that one of them might be able to offer at a good rate, at a good rate, then we'd have, you already have the authority to invest in those. So item sixty-eight and sixty-nine, again, we have made every effort, and I'm sure Mark has done so, in picking up all the financial institutions within the county.
Move with approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item seventy is the, in Retirement System Investment Policy and Guidance for the Defined Benefit Retirement System. So that's different, of course, from the previous one that you approved, but this would be just for the Defined Benefit Retirement System.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item seventy-one is a resolution that would approve our taking any interest that we earn and put it into county general, except for those that are tied to specific funds, as we talked about earlier. All other interests would go into general fund.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item seventy-two is for the investment of the self-insuring employee for our self-insuring funds, and asks for your permission to, again, invest that.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item seventy-three is, uh, who would be authorized to open, maintain, and invest our accounts, so the county treasurer of Oklahoma County. And those three folks, as you can see down there, would be myself, Mark Sockel, as Chief Investments, and Christie Miller, who's questionable, but I still will put her on there.
Thank God she's there.
Wait a minute, remember, you were my favorite.
I feel it.
I noticed that all three of these people are in the room, you wanna recognize them, uh, for...
Oh, thank you. Well, I'm Butch.
Yeah, no, I mean the important ones.
Oh, the important ones, Mark Sockel, I would hope everyone knows Mark, and certainly, I would hope everyone knows Christie. They do, incidentally, I have a lot of fun with those folks, but I can tell you, they do yeoman's work for this county.
Absolutely.
And I mean, they just, every single day. And then you throw in a Jerry Stone, who keeps us on the straight and narrow, we got a pretty all-gone good bunch up there. They're aging fast, but we got a pretty good bunch. Okay, so I would again, uh, ask for your approval on seventy-three.
Counsel to disregard that last...
Privileges, yeah.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, seventy-four is on the county bonds two thousand and eight reimbursement, and again, we're asking for, uh, permission to invest that. As you recall, we refinanced, uh, the two thousand and eight, but then, or some of it, still, has happened to be held out, a little over a million dollars. So we just ask your permission by this resolution to continue to invest that money until it is paid out.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item seventy-five, again, authorizing investment in the capital property, OSU Fund, this was the dollars and the proceeds received from the sale of the property up on Portland.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, thank you very, very much, it's always a pleasure working with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Like that included in the record.
Yeah, I just was thinking the same thing. All right, is there a motion to approve the claims?
Close the claims.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No change to the blanket?
Move the blanket.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, Commissioner comments? And I just want, well, to confirm that before Randy stole my thunder, I had it down here to recognize Ray for his birthday, so...
Well, thank you.
So, you, you wishing him a happy birthday?
Yeah, I wish him.
My, uh...
I want you to sing, though.
I'll wish him.
We decided last year that you wouldn't spank him anymore.
Yeah.
That's a good thing, I've got a heavy hand this year.
Well, it, well, it took up too much time, you know?
So funny.
Okay.
Anything?
Oh, I just wanna ask, Eric, Eric, do we have any kind of interaction with DEQ about Bagarber Wellington? Uh, water contribute to it?
The DA is giving you the stink eye.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'll catch you in the hallway. All right, I'm sorry. I should've said it's when he was talking about the water, and that's when the idea came to my mind, so I'm sorry. Okay, other than that, I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you for all the well wishes, uh, for the birthday. The one consolation I have is that there's another person that has a birthday today, and he's two years older than I am, and will always be two years older than I am, and that is President Trump.
Okay.
No well wishes from you?
No.
Just be that one.
He'll sweep me back.
Yeah? Okay, uh, any new business? Opening of the bid, Amber? Morning.
I have three bids this morning, and the first one is CW one seven zero four one, ask for plumbing supplies, countywide. Totally Pro Products Incorporated, wind supply of Oklahoma City, police supply. CW one eight zero two seven for correctional facility equipment and supplies, this is for the Oklahoma County Detention Center and the Juvenile Justice Center. AmeriCare Products. Goldre Corporation. Charm Tech. BSI. Uniform Manufacturing. Ape Any Supply. Hab Textile Company. Bob Barker Company. Care Supplies LLC. Carolina Textiles. OD Targan, Targan. Pop Product. And ICS Gel Supplies. Bid number CW one eight zero two nine is for commissary items for the sheriff's office. Rico Greetings and Gift Company. Office Max. Care Supplies LLC. Union Supply Group. ICS Gel Supplies. Maxima Supply. And East Group.
Uh, move with approval.
Is it they be tabulated and returned with a recommendation, second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now is there a motion to recess into executive session?
Move with...
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, is there a motion to return to regular session?
Move with...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, is there action on item eighty-three and eighty-four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item eighty-three, I would move that we, uh, proceed as, uh, discussed in executive session with regard to, uh, settlement amounts that were discussed in executive session.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And as to item eighty-four, I would, uh, move that we approve expenditures of, uh, up to eight thou- eight thousand dollars for the, uh, provision of interpreters and depositions in this particular case, as requested by the DA.
He's second, her, was that a motion?
Yeah, it was a motion.
Okay, and she's second? All in favor?
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye.
Now is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we'll recess into PVA, executive session.